We'll talk about the results of the audit. We'll go through briefly the required communications that I'm required to make to you as the governing body of the city with respect to the audit. And then we'll talk for a few minutes about the A-133 audit and some of the results of that process. And this will be the last year we'll call it A-133. This next year it will just be a single audit under uniform guidance. So, we did complete the audit of the financial statements. And, you know, I'm happy to report that the financials were issued before the holidays this year, which is a good step forward from what we've had in the past. And, you know, I think, you know, the finance staff with Christine and he really put up forth a monumental effort with, you know, a few less people with some open positions than they've had in the past to get things done. So, I'd like to thank them for their hard work and all the assistance they extended to us because it was very painful when I come in here with six or seven auditors and monopolize their time all day for several months. So, anyway. And then we also issued our, the report that's required under government auditing standards related to compliance and internal controls. And that one was, both of those reports were issued unmodified or clean with no findings. And we completed our A-133 audit of the federal programs and certain state requirements, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. So, there should be a letter in your materials that stated December 23rd that goes through these required communications in detail. So, I'm going to stay high level with my discussion because I know you have that letter. The first part of the letter talks about what an audit is and what it isn't, that we look at internal control as a way to reduce our audit procedures and not to give an opinion on it. And, you know, that we're focusing on the identification of material errors and that we won't necessarily find things that are immaterial. The second part of the required communications is, obviously, the financial statements the city issues are a big thick book like this, and some of the items that are in the book are unaudited. But we do read everything in the book to make sure it's consistent with what we've learned as we've performed the audit procedures. We also have a section that talks about accounting policies and alternative treatments. The city did adopt a very significant accounting standard, which I talked with you about in the summer, related to pensions, where we took all the pensions for the city and the schools, and we recorded those liabilities on the city's balance sheet or statement of net position this year, which had a fairly significant impact on those. You know, we've taken a look at the accounting policies that the city has chosen, and we don't have any concerns about the conservatism or appropriateness of those policies. We're required to let you know if we do. In terms of judgments and accounting estimates, we do have a number of self-insurance liabilities, including the health insurance that came about with the new Norfolk consortium that you all put in place in the last fiscal year. And there, those are significant estimates. We have our actuary look at what your actuary comes up with, and we didn't take exception to the liabilities that the city had recorded. And same thing with the pension and the OPEB. We involve our actuary in that process to try to make sure that the assumptions are reasonable. There are a couple of adjustments that were recorded as a result of the audit. We considered them to be immaterial, but they were recorded to get things right. So, you can take a look at those. They're attached to the letter. And then no disagreements or consultations or any other issues that we'd be required to report to you. And we did confirm our independence in writing with this letter of the city as of the date we issued our report. Any questions on any of that? Okay. So, now we're going to move on to what is primarily the A-133. You know, we did not identify any weaknesses in internal control as part of the performance of the financial statement audit. And that's one of the things that's included in that government auditing standards opinion that I referred to above, no material weaknesses. Okay? So, that's good. And then we always have a few suggestions for improvements and controls that we go through with the city manager and his team, you know, as part of the process. But they're more minor in nature and not required to be discussed at any greater detail. The A-133 audit was completed, and that audit is over the city and the schools collectively. There was 94.2 million of federal assistance that was received in the fiscal year and covered by the audit. There were 10 programs that were selected, three at Norfolk Public Schools and seven at the city. You know, the general cutoff for what's considered to be a major program is 2.8 million. And most of those major programs, unless they're considered high risk, are audited on a rotating basis, right? So, they're not all audited every year. And then because of that, there are certain smaller programs that get thrown into the mix that are considered high-risk smaller programs that also operate on a rotating Going forward, you'll probably see less programs audited under the uniform guidance. The uniform guidance has kind of shifted the focus to, you know, putting more onus on the governmental entities that receive the assistance, having improved internal controls, and maybe taking a little bit less effort off of the audit itself, which is probably a better way to go. I mean, an audit will only find what it'll find, you know, in terms of what you pick and select. Better to have stronger controls that operate every day.
Excuse me. Can you give us an example of what that change would look like, like what you would do now that you, or what you would do going forward differently than you do now?
Sure. Yeah. You know, the audits of the individual programs are still going to be performed under the compliance supplement that the OMB puts out of the federal government. So, the procedures that we're going to perform on a particular program that's selected will not be very different than what they've been in the past, right? It's just, like, right now, we go through a process where, you know, we have to cover 25% of the dollars. You know, we have to audit all the A programs, the ones over the 2.8 million, just every three years. We have to, you know, we go through this complex calculation where we have to pick a certain number of Bs depending on how many As we didn't audit. That part of it is getting simplified, right? So that we will test less programs on an annual basis. But the work that we do on a program that's selected for testing will be just as robust as it's been in the past, right? So, just takes, you know, a little, a little, a fewer, smaller number of programs, which it takes a long time to audit 10 programs. I mean, it really does. So, anyway, so that's something that'll happen coming forward. We did have a few findings that were reported in the A-133 audit, and they're described in very robust detail, beginning on page 233 of this document. I know you don't want to look at it now. But because they are described in robust detail, I'm going to try to stay high level unless people have specific questions about them. The first few are in the Community Development Block Grant programs and the home program. The first one deals with cash management. And basically, the way that works is that there's a rule that HUD has that basically says that if you request reimbursement from the federal government, you have to turn around and pay the vendor that you requested reimbursement for within a three-business-day period. Or you have to maintain documentation as to why you didn't. So, we had this as a finding in the prior year. And I guess the good news is, you know, I mean, anytime we have a finding in the prior year, it's going to be the middle of the year, you know, before you, you know, can really address it and try to solve the problem. So, the good news on this one is the items that we tested that were in the second half of the year didn't have any exceptions. But the items that we tested in the first half of the year, when you hadn't had an opportunity to react to what we found in the previous year, you know, we still had some issues. So, that one should go away. The second one deals with a report that is prepared in the Community Development Block Grant that the rules say is supposed to be prepared cumulatively, and you all prepare it quarterly. It's something that you've talked with the state about or whatever, but until we get all that in writing and, you know, we have to report in accordance with the rules we're given. So, that one's fairly simple. The earmarking one was a tiny little difference that occurred in the earmarking calculations because you all monitor it based on budget. And the actual came out a little bit different, and we ended up with a small, a small exceeding of the limit with respect to earmarking in the Community Development Block Grant. The next one deals with suspension and debarment. This one is a little bit tough. It's been up here before, but not in this particular grant. Anytime you enter into a contract where you're spending federal dollars or you renew a contract where you're spending federal dollars, you have to check to make sure that the vendor is not suspended or debarred by the federal government. And this was renewals that were the issue with this one, not, you know, the initial procurement process. It's pretty easy to fix. I mean, there's a website that you can go check. None of the vendors were suspended or debarred. So, no question costs or any issues, you know, with respect to that. It's just having those controls in place, you know, to make sure that you check it.
So, you're saying that we're not checking on renewals, and we just got lucky?
Um, I mean, I think it's, yeah, I mean, it's probably not quite that simple. But, I mean, these are people that you're doing, you know, ongoing programs, whatever. And they may have checked them, but they didn't maintain, or maybe they didn't maintain the documentation, you know. But I think it's something where, you know, having some firm, you know, documented policies around, you know, how you're going to check it and what you're going to keep to prove that you did check it, you know, is the recommendation, I guess, that we're making. So, the next three findings are related to schools programs. The first one deals with comparability in Title I, and it's actually a, an issue that was identified by the Virginia Department of Education before we came in, but were tasked, and, you know, they had already worked through a process with the schools to resolve the issue. But because we're tasked to test the same thing, and the fix doesn't completely take effect until the following fiscal year, it gets reported. So, but the finding says that, so.
So, are we working with Norfolk Public Schools based on what the state has said they needed to do and what we need to do as far as the city? Are we talking together so that we can fix that? I don't want.
Yeah. Yeah. Like, this one, they've, they, you know, if I were to come in and test it next year, I think it would already be fixed, right? Because it was identified not as part of our audit, but as part of an ongoing monitoring process between, you know, it just, you know, it takes some time. I mean, it dealt with the fact that you had the new Campustella School that opened, which was a K through eight school, which meant it should only be compared with other K through eight schools, and there was only one other one. And they had done the comparison on a broader level, right? Looking at, you know, students in those ages, you know, and the state, you know, didn't think that that's the way the comparison should have been done. So, they worked through it, and, you know, it's been resolved. And there were no, you know, financial ramifications or whatever. It was just working through something new and, you know, what is the right way, you know, to run the test? So, that's, that's kind of what that one was. The second one, the next one, and I know this Title I stuff is, you know, sensitive, but that, there is, when you're trying to determine school-wide programs for purposes of Title I, they use the results of the school breakfast and lunch, free and reduced lunch numbers, right? Because you all have a bunch of construction going on, we have kids who are assigned to certain buildings, and the principal of that, of that, or certain schools, right, who may be sitting in another building and eating lunch in a different building. And they did, everything was fine, right? Like, the thresholds far exceed, you know, any issue. But they didn't have good documentation on how they took, you know, this building and divided it up into the three schools that you had kids sitting in that, you know what I mean? It was a documentation issue because of a unique situation. But, I mean, they far exceed the threshold, so there are no issues from that perspective. It's just, it's just making sure you've got that tight documentation. And the next one is the same way. I mean, it was just an anomaly in the reporting, and it was one or two or three students in the special ed reporting where the documentation, you know, wasn't there as to, you know, maybe this student is reported over here, but he should have been here. But the data was all accurate, you know, about the disability and that type of thing. And then they had, they were one or two that they reported short. But again, no, no issues with the funding. It's just, you know, getting that documentation tight around the reports. The next two TANA findings, I mean, we have these every year. I mean, the methodologies that the state has in place is just a very complex program to run. And so, we almost always have a couple that slip through the cracks and, and work through. I mean, there's no, no question costs or anything associated with them. And I think that the number of findings that we have that come out of this test are significantly less than they were four or five years ago. So, they've done a lot, you know, to try to keep it from happening. It's just very difficult to be perfect on those two. And then HIV, there were some reporting errors that were, that occurred because of an open position and some different people trying to cover. Again, no question costs. Everything, you know, got reported correctly in the end, just the timing was a little bit off. So, and then we did have a few findings out of the things that we test for the APA, but nothing significant. Any questions on any of that? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
I'm sorry to make you come back.
That's okay. That's okay. I understand.
John, anything you want to add? Are we ready to go?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you for the good work. Okay. Close session.
Mayor, before we go into a close session, I just wanted to echo what Cheryl said. We have appointed Christine Gorzinski as the Director of Finance, and that was, I mean, she, I think she went into this, Mayor and Members of Council, back in June, basically saying, "I'll just pitch in." So, Christine started off with us 20 years ago as a volunteer in finance, and she has worked her way through up in the system, and she's really sort of after across the Commonwealth in terms of innovative financing techniques. And so, we were somewhat surprised that after growing up and being a part of finance, that this was something that she actually wanted to do. And so, we sat down and talked it through, and what she did was nothing short of stellar, pulling together this audit with short staff and an interim basis, and we're very appreciative.
Great. Okay. We're going to go into a, have a close meeting.
Move the Members of Council to send a closed meeting on January 26, 2016, 5:40 p.m. The flip was set out in clause 3 of subsection A of section 242-3711 of the Virginia Freedom Defamation Act. That is discussion of the disposition of publicly owned real property in the area of South Military Highway, where a discussion in a meeting would adversely affect the party's position of public body. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Bredeger?
Aye.
Ms. Riddick?
Aye.
Ms. Schegel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Nguyen?
Aye.
Ms. Frame?
Yes. Thank you.
Move that matter forward. And so, I'd like to meet with him, and then at some point meet with you as the mayor, and then we could set something up to discuss amongst ourselves. Yes, sir. That's all I have.
Yeah. Other thing, my employees went on the payroll compensation history, and, you know, in anticipation of the loan, I mean, the loan, the raise is coming, and found that they were not eligible. They had maxed out, so to speak, and, but they're still working. And so, question is, that if you're still working, why, you know, how do you not get a raise? And I'm going to leave that with you, Marcus, and an answer for that.
I think we need to fix that.
Yeah.
I've found another example of that, three of them, actually.
Right.
So, we need to, it probably impacts about 200.
Right.
No, maybe 100. But we'll talk about it, you know, soon enough. We'll get you a chance to reply. But it's for people who are at the top of their pay scale, you know, their steps, or getting bonuses.
One time?
One and a half. One and a half, but, okay.
Okay. Also, I brought this up a couple of weeks ago, and Vernon has started investigating about St. Thomas AM Zion Church. They've been in existence since 1877, and I have some documents I'm going to give to the lawyer, so he can give it to Vernon, for their applications and for tax exemption. But I guess my question is that, how is it that, if you have an organization that's been exempt however long this process has been going on, and then all of a sudden, it's not exempt? Are we so tied to our buildings that we can't get in the car and go over and find out what's going on? This is about the second or third time that this happened. And it's just, just to make any sense, if they've been sitting there getting exemptions, and in this particular instance, it had, it has gone to the treasurer's office, isn't assigned it to an attorney, and even if the tax issue is settled, there's some cost to this particular attorney that they expect this church to pay. And so, and I know that, you know, I'm going to give it its, it's the auditor, you know, or neither assessor, rather, works for us. And so, I'm going to pass this around so we can get to Vernon, and Vernon can probably get back with me, you know, on that. I have another issue that I'm, I'm going to pass this over to Marcus. That's Marcus.
Yes, sir.
It's not that it involves two citizens that are having a disagreement in their neighborhood. And the last thing is, we have a resolution at the end of our agenda that has to do with the St. Paul Boulevard quadrant. And I'd like to hold up on that until we can, you know, I would say, because what's happening, now Calvert Park has been added to the equation. And initially, with St. Paul's, they went into Addicts Eastern West, they went into Brambleton, they went into Huntersville, Hunter Square. And, and so now, you've added Calvert Park to the equation, and so now you're continually going east. And, and that's going to impact the people who, over in Brambleton, that just built these lovely homes. And let's go west.
I agree completely. And the map drawn was, was way outside of what any contemplation was that I understood about what was necessary. It's the same thing when we started that St. Paul's plan. The quadrant, all of a sudden, just grew. I mean, it took in enormous, I mean, numbers of people, and then it started causing concerns. So, we're going to continue this matter until the next meeting here, so we can get it right.
Can I ask a follow-up with Paul on the church? So, if, and Marcus, I'm not understanding this. There's a lot of churches in my area that are closing down or for sale, and there's another church that usually sometimes will buy it or rent it. So, they, they get to continue having the tax exemption because the tax exemption's on the property because it was designated as a church? Are they having to reapply for tax exemption? Is it automatically gone? Is it with the organization, or is it with the?
I think it would go with the, I'm not sure. Maybe the lawyer can answer that.
Because there's a lot, there's a lot of churches that have just turned over.
It's with the use that's being made.
I was told it was based on the use. If they buy a church building and turn it into a restaurant, it's no longer tax exempt. But if they buy a church building and they keep it a church building, they do have to reapply. But also, I think there's some law, something that, when we had a situation with another church, that they said that these churches have to do this piece of paper filing every three years.
That's what I'm wondering, is that if they're a brand-new church, the hoops that we make churches jump through in order to become tax exempt, are we making the new operators go through the same thing? Because some could be shady. I don't know what they're doing in, you know, some of the operations, and I've heard of some things that churches are doing. I just want to make sure that we have a lot of old established churches that have been tax exempt for years that are just dying, and they're being taken over by what I would normally call storefront churches, that I don't know how they're operating their, their business. I'm concerned about things that they may be doing in there, and are we looking into it?
This, this particular church has been operated as a church continuously since 1877.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Marcus, also with, let's just say the church has the exemption, but the, the churches are buying up lots.
Okay.
So, where does that, that put them? Are they still taxed on those lots as the, being the church? Or is it something?
Depends on the use.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, it's just a lot.
But it depends on what they're going, what they use the lot for.
Okay. So, do we go back and check? Because if these lots have been bought years ago from the churches, and they are just going through communities and buying up lots, and nothing's being done with, with the lots, then where does the church stand and where do we stand? Are they tax exempt then?
I think what would help is to have the assessor in.
Okay.
Because I don't know the specificity of this one, but it's just what the vice mayor said. At one point, we had a situation similar to this a few years ago, and it was a question about whether the church just sent in this three-year certification. It didn't make it to the assessor's office. So, but there are certain types of exemptions, and one is, you know, your church, your house of worship. And then there's another type of classification for an exemption that's different. So, it's, it may be a memo or having the assessor come in to give us a refresher.
Every time the title to a piece of property changes, the assessor should look at it anew. I think that happens. And when a piece of property becomes titled in a church, in my experience, the assessor looks at it to see, are they using it as for a church purpose, or are they using it for some other purpose? But I think that's an ongoing review, and the churches obliged to apply for exemption for any property that it wants to have an exemption.
Okay.
Okay. Based on all of the events regarding the city treasurer's office, all of the city, there's a lot of angst about office, people nervous. I think as a council, it would be a good one, and I think the city treasurer would have our internal auditor or somebody go in there for a score. I think they're going to be fine, but I think it would be to our advantage, the citizen's advantage, and probably the treasurer's advantage to take a look and be sure, give them some assurances that everything's fine. That's all I have.
A couple of things. On our agenda tonight is the Pimento Cafe restaurant that's coming on Colley, and they're going to have outdoor seating. I've heard from several people, including some of the neighbors, about concern of the configuration of the outdoor seating and its access for pedestrian walkway. I've talked with George about it a little bit, and could we delay that just to have Mr. Ricks look at that again and reassure us that that is compliant with ADA and that is compliant with ADA and our complete streets that we're also passing tonight? Anybody have any angst about that?
What number is that? Do you have any...
Okay.
Can you hand the other matter?
Yes. So, secondly, I've always been somebody that has been very anxious to support our planning commission and am disappointed when this body doesn't appreciate the hard work that they've done. But there is a public hearing tonight that we're doing on a rezoning in, on Melrose Parkway, which is the area I've been talking about for several years, about the difficulty we're having in this neighborhood with the creep from rental housing from Old Dominion. Melrose Parkway is probably the epitome of what we're seeing with the devaluation of the property in Larchmont and Lambert's Point. This is a once lovely street that was owner-occupied by young families. It's now been taken over by so many rental properties with students saying, you know, they're a mess. I mean, absolutely a mess. Mr. Homewood gave us a very eloquent summary of why they did not approve this rezoning. Administration felt that because we still had, a great majority of the neighborhood was owner-occupied and single, single-family, that taking this lot and carving it into two sub-area lots to build homes was not in our best interest. Now, I've talked to several of the planning commission members, and they agreed that after looking at it, they felt the architecture of these two buildings and the products being used and the proffering of reduced parking made it a good choice to approve the rezoning. If you walk this street, you will see that there are homes that have nice architecture and pretty prosperous homes that now have probably six, eight kids in it. Cars in, the lawns, couches in the, on the porches, red plastic cups every Friday morning in the yard. Architecture alone, I can promise you, is not gonna save this area. We need to not go down this slippery slope, I think. And I'm, I'm really very anxious about us voting to allow this rezoning, because I think it then sets a standard for more of these small houses to be bought, demolished, rezoned. And we're just gonna continue this creep and the devaluation of these properties in these neighborhoods. So, I'm gonna vote against this. I wanted to talk to you all about why I am. I've talked to both Martin and Dan Newman about this, and they understood. I have been harping on administration to help me with this. And they did such a nice job in presenting, I thought, a very valid case on why this shouldn't have been rezoned. And so, I was disappointed that the vote went the way it did. So enough on that. Thirdly...
What did the civic league say about it?
They didn't say.
Didn't say.
Yeah. I very frankly went to the civic league that October. It's a lovely civic league. I think it just got kind of, you know, you know, not really recognized what was going on with it.
But Terry is right with the way this Melrose, especially that block, has been handled over time. And it's, it's not far from Old Dominion, from the Foreman Field and this, this lot. And in, you know, in the sheet that they gave us, they said the owner promises, promises, not the, you know, that it will be owner-occupied, but just a matter of time before it flips to rental property. I mean, that's just exactly what happens.
This is exactly what happened on 45th Street. We have lovely housing that had good quality stuff. And that place is a mess already. It is filled with kids that are parking on the yard. They're not taking their trashcans in. I mean, it's, all of our students. I mean, it's all of our kids, you know, what they do. But that didn't help. And, and we tried to have that owner occupied, and there's no way can help.
They buy, they occupy it for a matter of months, and then they bring rental...
Or they buy it for their child.
Yeah.
And then it's family occupied and sticks to their closest BFF. So, yeah. All right. On a more noble moment, I think we've all seen all these editorials repeatedly in the paper by Jim Oliver, by W. Winn, by the Norfolk Community Foundation about regionalism and we need a movement to be working together to help us with all of the problems that we have. Transportation, advocacy at the state, for trying to figure out, you know, the funding gap. And yet, I'm not hearing anything from us about what's happening. Am I just not in that circle? Or is there movement from our administration to reach out to the other cities in the community, in the region? What's happening?
It's gonna take a lot of time to talk about that. I mean, the, the transportation issues.
Flooding.
The Go Virginia piece.
Yeah.
I mean, we, I mean, I'm, we could schedule as much time as you want. There are reasons, reasons in Virginia that communities compete with each other and don't cooperate very much, despite all the aspirational, you know, words that you hear from guys like Jim and them. But we had to identify what the issues are first, I think, to, to it. And then, how we can solve them. But, and I'm glad to be a part of that. I know the transportation, they're just, the money is enormous to cover, to cross some of these water, these, these crossings. And, I mean, even today in Richmond, a notion that we could index the gas tax, that we could get as much money as we thought we were gonna get in this transportation funds, another 200 million that nobody would know about, died because some leadership in Richmond decided they didn't want, you know, you got to help us. I mean, you've got the, you know, the House of Delegates, the chairman of transportation is, is Virginia Beach. He was all for it. I mean, you've got, we have leadership down here that just can't get anything. It's, no one will pay attention to them.
You know, for as many issues as we have and differences as we have, I think there's some real common ground that we all recognize. And it, you know, we don't have to do everything. We could just start with one issue and somebody call a meeting. And maybe Jim Spore is waiting for you to call him, and the guy in Chesapeake is waiting for Jim to call, you know. Somebody's got...
Well, this Go Virginia initiative is getting, is getting some traction with it. We've got about 27 million in the budget. And the idea...
But what are we as a city doing for Go Virginia?
Well, I mean, okay, you go ahead.
So, a couple of things to talk to you, Billy. The...
But we're gonna run out of time here for me.
Okay. I'm sorry.
We need to be careful about how much time you need, because we got two presentations here.
So, we do. So, the CEOs of all the 17 jurisdictions, we meet monthly.
Well, let's come in at four o'clock next week.
Okay.
And next time, we meet, and we'll discuss, we'll get this on the table.
You know, we have an...
Yeah, I mean, when we meet next time. Okay? Okay.
And Terry, you remember when we went to VML, a group, small group of us, and we had planned it for November? So, I think he's Virginia Beach.
Chesapeake.
Chesapeake. He's working on if we can all get back together and discuss the issue and just bring all of us together again, because he's really serious. The councilman from Chesapeake is. Mr. Riddick, you mentioned the ward for, well, the cock, the St. Paul Quadrant. And that was a concern with, for me as well. And so, we're going back to the board, the drawing board on that one. So, that's clear for me. And lastly, this Love Locks thing. Is Lori in? Anyway, the Love Locks. So, we've been getting all of these emails about the Love Locks on the Hague Bridge. And so, I asked Lori, she gave a wonderful response to what's going on with the locks on the Hague. But I, I think that we may need to go back and have a little more conversation with the people who are concerned. I've heard from a handful. But maybe if they have a clear understanding of what that involves...
But who wants it anyway? I mean, I'm just...
Well, you know, it's interesting, because we have heard from, there are four individuals that have been emailing us.
Yeah.
And at our last get task force that represented businesses and clergy and residents and all, and everybody liked. I mean, they all...
I'm just wondering who...
Two or one.
The other side of it is who wanted, who wants them? Because...
Just moved, there was that international movement that started.
Well, I do have to agree with one thing. If, if this is considered graffiti, and we removed them off of the other bridges, then either we need to change our ordinance and policy or on it. But we can't pick and choose how we enforce it.
I thought we didn't remove it because of graffiti, but for maintenance issues.
Maintenance, I don't, I mean...
Three things. Is it graffiti attorney's offices now? And then there's two other issues. And the reason the other ones were moved are, fell in the, in the third one. The second one is, is it a public safety hazard? Now, does it, is it a potential for structural integrity to degrade what it's attached to? And that was the case the other day. They were attaching cables that could not sustain that weight. We have, none of those scenarios are on the other locations that we've seen.
And Ron, if that is the case, if those three issues are what we're looking at, I think that just needs to be flat-out seen. This, absolutely. This is where our guidelines are, and here's why the Love Locks are there, and it's understood.
That's me.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
I have a Valentine's Day coming up.
I had questions about the compensation plan also. And so, those are already raised. I don't need to re-raise them again. Just to say that, in addition to whatever our compensation plan is, we also need to look at other compensation plans for cities that we're competing for applicants. And so, are folks doing better off in Chesapeake or Virginia Beach or Portsmouth or wherever? Because we're all competing basically for the same talent pool. So we wanna make sure that it's beneficial to our employees to work for us and that, you know, the price of bread goes up. Their paycheck should go up too.
Exactly.
And then, I would like to, I, first, James. Okay, James, I have a specific issue that I'll talk to you about, but it relates to the Renovate Norfolk program and the procedure. And maybe that's something that you can bring to us in committee, as far as the procedure, what, where you all are. Because in this specific issue, the citizen was told, we're not sure what we're doing. That's not a good answer. So, we just need to, you know, know where the program is, what's actually happening, and, and that I could speak to you about this specific individual and his address, and you can follow up with him afterwards. But how that program is being administered and whatnot. And I think that's it.
The, just a question, Marcus, about process. So, when we used to bring up council concerns, every week, we would get a memo that would actually cover every single thing. And I've noticed that that's been dwindling down. So only the big things get covered. So I'm trying to figure out what happens to the little things. So a couple of weeks ago, I had asked about moving a HRT sign in front of Northside Middle School. It's still there. So, but, and I've received nothing back from anybody on, we've contacted HRT, and it's gonna be moved, you know, one block over, because there's people smoking out there when kids are coming to school. But I'm just wondering what's happening to those little things. Couple of months ago, I talked about the, the fence around the Tywar Drive underpasses down in Ocean View have been mangled and are falling over. They're still like that. They're rusty, they're falling apart. A car hit one section, it was never replaced. I just wanna know how these little things, and I could sit here, I wish I had time, Marcus, to email every single one of these. But when we bring them up here, it's, we're hoping that somebody's gonna address them and get back to us on a solution. This weekend, three more trees, healthy, mature trees, were wiped out on the Pretty Lake Bridge. Two weeks ago, another car went through it. I just wondering how long will they sit empty and not get replaced? And when we replace them, are we gonna replace them with rinky-dink trees that are gonna take another, you know, 10 years to get to the size that they were? But who reported it when they got taken down? Was, were, did the police, we talked about flames. If a car accident was made, is that person now responsible for paying for those trees to be replaced? Are they paying the value of not a rinky-dink tree, but a full tree that was there? Andy, you gonna use that too, rinky-dink tree? I've been talking, I, I, every year, I talk about the gateways. I've noticed that our parks and rent folks are now cleaning out bushes. So they're completely taking out bushes and landscaping that can't be maintained. That's a great thing, because I'd rather it be gone. But I'd like to know, are we putting trees back in the place? Because I heard we're gonna put trees. And so you take the bushes out, but trees are easy to maintain. So are we doing that, these spots that are being left without the bushes? Are they being seeded? What's gonna happen with those? Because now we have these big open areas, particularly in our gateway areas. And I'd like for us to, you know, look at improving our gateway areas, our entrances into the city. Just an idea, going down the Florida over Christmas, on the interstate, like when you join the Jacksonville, they have Jacksonville spelled out really big on white letters. When you're going down 95, when you're entering Jacksonville, can we look at some projects like that, that celebrate with our new logo, putting that up, you know, big for everybody to celebrate? We just need responses back to these things. I, I read the memos that come back. It seems to highlight the big things that are mentioned, not the little things. And then, even when the responses on the big things, they're just general information, they're not action items of, this is what's being taken care of with it.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So, Mayor, Members of Council, we have...
Okay. Brooke reminds me. Okay, we're gonna continue R10, which is the last thing, the resolution. And then we have, we have a resolution to appoint Suzanne Prohier to the Housing Authority, which we agreed to, and Roger Watson to the Taxi Department.
Have they addressed all the arrangements that go out of this?
It already happened. They, they had a great time, sir.
Okay. So, Mayor, Members of Council, what we're trying to do traditionally is have the chief come in each January to discuss the previous year stats. We also have two additional items that are not time-sensitive tonight, because it deals with sand management and also a little bit of, I talked about the great announcement last week with the, the grant that the city won. But having said that, I think, feel comfortable that the remaining time would be for the chief, and we can deal with the other issues next time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, boss. As Andrew said, I'm here tonight to kinda give a year-end review of what the police department has done in 2015, and to talk a little bit about crime stats, so everybody can see what's going on. To start with crime statistics, as you can see by this pie chart, the majority of our crime is property crime, in particular, larceny. Seventy-one percent of our crime falls into that category. And then the rest are broken down. You can see the sliver of new presentation. Violent crime, when we took it, we looked at homicides. You can see our five-year murder trend there. We were up five reports this year. You know, one is too many. And right now, we have 15 open cases. Four of those occurred in December. The cases are still being worked, and we are going to do our best to bring those to a successful conclusion. If we look 10-year, we still see that we're on downward trend as opposed to other years, if we take the long view of these, even though we had the spike this last year. Talk about rapes. We are up eight reports from last year, from 120 to 128. Seventy-four percent of these, the victim and the suspect are somehow or another related to one another. Either they're a family member, they're an acquaintance, they're a boyfriend, girlfriend. There is a connection between the two.
How many of those are not solved?
That number I do not have, but I can get that for you.
And also, like, what is your general percentage of solved rapes where you are able to catch the suspect and prosecute as well?
I can get that for you as well.
Chief, how many murders occurred? Because we were doing pretty good. And then, right there at the end, so how many occurred within, like, December at the end of the year?
We had seven in December.
We had seven in December.
Yeah, so we would have been below.
Yeah, we, December was a, was a problem for us. So, one of the issues we have with tracking clearance rates, Vice Mayor, is the National Incident-Based Reporting System, which is what we've gone to based on the FBI. For some reason, does not track clearance rates. So when we pull that data, we have to pull that on our own and hand-collate that. And we will, we will do that for the question you have.
Prevalence being caused by perfect.
How many we've, how many cases we've closed, just a minute.
Okay.
10-year, you can see we're just about even with rapes, sexual assaults. As you can see by our five-year robbery trend, we are still trending downwards. But we did have an issue this year, and that was, you know, primarily what drove our violent crime rate. We went from 412 reports to 494. Now, we've taken some specific actions in reference to deal with that. You know, we've done some enforcement-type things that I'm not going to talk about in an open council meeting as far as tactics go. But the other thing that we've done is we've met with the store owners and tried to talk to them about target hardening and talk about some of the methodologies they can use to make them less attractive to these, these types of crimes. As a matter of fact, our Field Operations Bureau Chief today met with a group of 7-Eleven owners to have that very conversation. And then we are going to go out to their main business group to talk more about what they need to do to be able to protect themselves from this. So we're attacking it not just from an enforcement and, and police methodology way to do it, but we're also taking a look at prevention and trying to build that into what we're doing.
Chief, you mentioned specifically the 7-Eleven business owners, but is that something that we can include other convenience store people as well? Is it something collectively we can do?
Oh, absolutely. And that's exactly what we're doing. Today was with the 7-Eleven owners, but we do go out to other businesses as well and make that contact, so we can make sure that we're addressing all of those. You know, one of the issues we have with robbers this year is there's no real pattern for us to be able to develop. They were all over the place. And not only did it affect us, it affected all of the areas. It affected the entire region. You know, and that's, you know, when you have something like that, you have to pull out all the stops to try to figure out what's going on. So it's a little bit difficult for us to get a handle on, but we are taking steps to address it.
I had, I guess towards the middle, to the end of December, when we were having such a rash of robbers at these convenience stores, I mentioned to the chief that we might have to do some overtime, pay overtime pay to officers. I texted manager about that, and he never responded. So I don't guess he thought that was a good idea. But a lot of times, when people are working at these convenience stores, that's their second job, maybe their third job. And it's just unfortunate that their lives are put in jeopardy for somebody who's going to come in there and maybe get $40 or $50, especially at these 7-Elevens and places like that. I also mentioned to the chief years ago, we had a, we had a police chief here named Brown. And they would put, he was from Dallas, Texas, and they put these big yellow signs on these convenience stores and other businesses and said that this business could be staked out with a police officer with a shotgun. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. And it was, it was a successful effort. In a lot of instances, I know they might have shot, you know, two or three robbers. But, you know, I think somehow you've got to let these robbers go in and realize that it's not going to be a walk in the park. And that, you know, if you've got somebody that's working a second or third job, you know, trying to take care of their families, and you're going to come in and take some money and possibly take their lives, then we can't take it, you know, lightly. I mean, we've got to fight fire with fire when it comes to that.
Mr. Reddick, we, I'm sorry.
And I was going to say too, is it also possible, Marcus, maybe we can help the small business owners? Because I like to watch a lot of, like, the CSIs and stuff. And, but one of the things that I consistently hear is that when store owners have security cameras, either one, they don't work, or two, the quality is not great. So even if they get the act caught on camera, all you have is a blurb of someone. There's not a really good picture. So it might be possible, if, I know our grants people work a lot to find grants for the city and things of that nature, but maybe we could look at finding grants for the business owners that might be like a 50-50 match on an upgrade. So if we found the money and they could come up with the 50%, the grant would pay the 50%. Or maybe we could even split the 50% that they have to come up with, or something like that, to help them upgrade their security equipment, so that, one, it works, and, two, the image that you get is of such a quality that you can actually see the person and get a good description of them and be able to possibly apprehend them. Just a thought from CSI.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, Chief, with a lot of the businesses, especially the 7-Eleven, at Valentine and Virginia Beach Boulevard, the philosophy is that you should be able to see straight through the business. And that is a huge deterrent.
They've done that, maybe wrote, and it's worked.
It has worked, that, you know, with small businesses, instead of putting up all of the, the sales that are going on with inside the, the business, that they take some of it down, and maybe two displays up, and you can actually see directly inside of the, the business. And that deters a lot of crime.
And that's exactly what we talked to the business owners about, making their stores more visible, making sure that we can see into them from the street. We've also talked to them about processes such as their cash handling, you know, making sure that there's not a lot of cash in the till, so that they're less attractive to robbers. And also talked about some things they can do doorway-wise, as far as buzzing people in and out after certain hours in order to further protect them. And, Mr. Reddick, we are spending a lot of overtime. We have our, a lot of our Department on Robbery details right now out looking, trying to make an arrest on these. And we are spending significant amounts, significant amounts of overtime to try to take care of that. You can see our 10-year robbery trend is still down, even though we have the spike that we had in this year. Aggravated assaults are up as well. This is due primarily to domestic aggravated assaults. This is, you know, 41 reports are domestics. Now, I will tell you, this is a tough crime for us to get a handle on, because almost all of them occur behind closed doors. They occur in places where there's no real pattern to them. They're not visible to us as, as a police agency, so they're tough to get at. What we do try to do is when we come across a domestic assault, we engage with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office in the lethality assessment protocol, where we talk to the victims of these crimes, and we go through a question, we ask them a series of questions to try to get at how much danger they might be in. And then we offer services to them in order to get them out of the situation, in order to prevent something serious from happening. And that's, you know, some take advantage of that, unfortunately, some do not, and end up staying in that situation.
Is there something that we did right in 2011, 12, and 14 that was so significantly different?
You know, I wish I had an answer for that, Vice Mayor. It is basically, like I said, these things are taking, taking place behind closed doors. It's any number of things. It goes from the domestic assaults to people shooting in occupied dwellings. There's any number, throwing rocks at a car can be an aggravated assault. So these are the type of things that get classified under this crime, and it makes it tough for us to come up with good interdiction strategies on this. So that's why we try to focus on the domestic assaults, because that is something that we might be able to have an effect on if we can get some of the victims to take advantage of the services we have.
So when you're talking about these, you're talking about, some of these are domestic assaults, correct?
So, I'm sorry, sir?
On this chart, we're talking, some of these are domestic assaults, correct?
Yes, sir.
Have we, and Chief, you may not know this, but what is our, part of that trend appears to me to be return of the fleet back from war. And I'm curious if you can talk to the Navy about what plan they have with regard to their personnel coming back from Iraq, Afghanistan deployments, those consecutive deployments that were, that kept sailors and officers away for a very long time. And what are they seeing, is I'm curious, what are they seeing in their own ranks with the increases in any assaults since their personnel have returned? I'm not indicting them on that. I'm curious if, as I look at that trend, we're talking about the influx back of the fleet from war. If you could find out for us, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
If that's a point, I'm not saying it is. And then if it is, is there a solution on the Navy side for taking care of this?
We'll certainly ask that question.
And that brings up a good point. The data that you're showing us are raw numbers, they're, they're actual numbers. But our population as a city has increased, am I correct? And that, so when you're doing these metrics, and crime is crime, and it looks bad up here, but I'm just curious to see the actual percentage on our population as opposed to actual numbers. Because even though there was an increase in murders from last year, I know most crime is done by per population, I guess, per person. So can we, I don't want to make anybody on that side run more data, but I'd be curious to see this compared to a population increase as opposed to just actual numbers. Because we have added people. I mean, we're, we're adding people.
Some people, but I mean, over.
A thousand a year.
Yeah. And if that has anything, and, or, like you said, if a ship goes in and you have, you know, some sailors that are hanging out in a bar and, you know, something, you know, does that increase your?
There's stories behind this, and probably especially the domestic piece.
Domestic piece.
Yeah. Chief, I mean, don't you think maybe more of them, more of them are now getting reported than they used to years ago?
Yes, absolutely. With the things that we've put in place, particularly with domestic assaults and with, with sexual assault, you know, we've put some methodologies in place that we think are encouraging more reporting. You can see we're, we're just about flat for our 10-year aggravated assault trend. This chart shows a five-year total violent crime trend. You know, we went from 1,249 incidents last year to 1,388. You can see by the chart, though, that, you know, the 2014 number is low compared to what we've had in, in years past. This uptick is due to our robbery numbers. That's what's driven this number for this last year. And it also matches the national trend that we've seen. If we look across the country, when we look at crime stats, we can see that across the country, we have seen an uptick in violent crime in some of our urban areas. There's no real good reason for that, but it's something that we're looking at, and we're talking to other departments about some of the things that they've done.
But haven't there been some claim of the Ferguson effect that comes out of that?
We have taken a look at that. We are in the middle of researching.
Why don't you explain it first? People are watching. Explain what the Ferguson effect is, and then tell me if you see that effect in our city.
The Ferguson effect refers to what they call this chilling wind that is blowing at the law enforcement as a result of the increased scrutiny, as a result of what's happened at Ferguson in Baltimore and New York. And the idea is that maybe police departments are pulling back and not doing as much enforcement as they had done in years past. I can tell you, one of the things that we have recently done is we took a look at what we call our Terry stops, which is basically our stops based on reasonable suspicion. That is an indicator of whether your police officers are working or not. I can tell you that on the Norfolk Police Department, our data so far shows that we actually increased the number of Terry stops that we made over the last year. So at this point, I'm not willing to say that the Ferguson effect is, is part of this department. Our officers are still going to work every day. Certainly, that I would have expected, if the officers were afraid to engage or were, you know, concerned about engaging, that they would have pulled back, and we would not be making those stops based on what we think to be suspicious behavior.
I'm glad that you, one, that you knew about it, of course, in your profession, that you actually took it upon yourself to investigate that. Because it's easy to stick your head in the sand and say, "It's not a problem." But I appreciate that you've done that.
So even with the uptick, you can see that our 10-year violent crime trend is still down. Moving on to property crime, we had some good successes with property crime this year. You can see we have a significant drop between 2014 and 2015. And when we look at the five-year trend, we are still trending downwards with that. When we take a look at the 10-year look, we're about flat. The hope is that if we continue with the downward trend, that eventually we'll change that figure as well, when we take the long view. The five-year larceny trend, as we break it down by individual crimes, you can see that we're down as well. 10-year larceny trend is still flat. Stolen vehicle trend, we had a spike last year in 2014. This year, we were able to reduce it to 751. So we had some success there. A lot of that was done through public education. A significant number of our stolen cars involved people leaving keys in it. They are warming them up. They leave keys in it. They leave valet keys in it. We did a fairly extensive blitz trying to get people to stop doing that. And hopefully, we had some effect on the rate. And we'll continue that in a year. You can see our 10-year stolen vehicle trend, we are still down. We talk about total property crime. We are still on a significant downward trend for the five-year. We're still trending down just a little bit 10-year, but it's basically flat. And in total crime, based on the strength of our property crime numbers, we still show a downward trend over the five years. And we actually were able to finish the year, I think, 3% under for total crime than we were last year. Okay, we're talking about some of our homicides, looking at the victims of the homicides. You can see by the slide, 26, 25%, actually, 74% of our victims are black males. The balance is made up of others, black male adults. The suspects, you know, our known suspects so far, 90% are, or 18 in number are black male adults, the balance being white male adults. When we look at relationships between suspect and victim, by far, over 51% are acquainted. And somehow or another, the, the suspect and the victim know one another. In another 6%, it's a family member. In another 3%, it's a, it's a romantic relation, relationship. And then in the other 3%, it is husband and wife. It's a domestic situation. The unknown or stranger one, those represent the number of cases that are still open. And we're sure that as we close those cases, we'll get more motive and be able to add more to the chart. Again, this is another one, looks at motives. The unknown represents our open cases. 34% were the result of an argument. 6% of a robbery. 9% had some drug connection. And then 14% were domestic-related. Weapons, you can see almost exclusively firearms in this. Over 80% of our homicides were committed by firearm, the balance being a sharp object or a blunt instrument. Okay, now on to some of the good things the police department is doing, or did over the past year. This is just a quick on our field operations strategic plan. Everybody knows about our CompStat process that we do twice a month. That's a data-driven way for us to take a look at what's happening and how we're going to attack it. A lot of high-facility patrols. We have tried to get into the predictive policing part, where we take a look at what the trends are over time. We graph those. We take a look at where the locations are and try to predict where the crime's going to take place, so we can actually deploy. We also respond based on what community, what our citizens tell us. We are in regular attendance of neighborhood watch and civic leagues. We do collaborative problem-solving and crime prevention activities. An example being what we did today with the store owners in reference to trying to deal with the robbery problem. We also focus a lot on our community partnerships. This is one of the things that we started recently that we think will pay big dividends for our department. In May of last year, we took part in a fair and a partial policing training given by Dr. Lori Friedel, who's the nationally-recognized expert in this. Not only was our, our command staff involved with this, but we also had members of our community in. As a result of that training, we developed As a result of that training, we developed a work plan on things that we were going to address within the department. And then we brought that group back in a very purposeful way and they meet twice a month. And this is our fair and impartial policing policy group. So we now have a group of citizens sitting with the police officers and they are going through all of our policies and procedures. They started out with our recruiting effort to take a look at ways that they could help us with that. They have moved through use of force, they're now looking at other policies. And what we're doing is developing a work plan with input from the community and how we might develop policies that we think will serve the police department but also the community as well. This has been a great group for us to work with and it has really given the citizens a voice in how the police department works. We're very excited about this and we're looking to continue this and find other things for them to do as we move through the year. These are some of the things that we're already involved in. The partnership with the Willis Broadcasting Group. We have two days a month with them. The officers are fielding live calls. If you ever get a chance to listen into the program, I would encourage you to do so. It's a great program for us to be able to reach out to a different part of the community and answer questions for them. We are still partnered with Teens with a Purpose. That is probably, without a doubt, the most talented group of young people that I've ever been involved with. They do a fantastic job with what they do. They were featured at the Martin Luther King Celebration this year. They do a great work. Ms. Deidra Love, who's the, the mentor for this group, does fantastic work. And we're very happy that they are part of our, you know, part of our department and that we're able to partner with them so well and get them to do some of our public service announcements and work with us on, on other things. The PLUS program is really one of our signature mentoring programs. It's where we're teaching, we're tutoring in our Title I schools. We went from a little over 40 officers to 53 this year. So we've increased the number of officers that are, that are in our schools doing this work. We, of course, still have our, our Cops and Kids Partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. Once a month, we're there. We actually had a Christmas party with them before we closed the calendar year out and we have some more things planned for them as the year goes on. We still have our recruit class out, working with our community before they graduate. The idea behind this, of course, is to build relationships before they're sworn in. I think recruit class 96, which is getting ready to graduate, it might be 97, had a coach drive this year to help give a coach to our poor. Some of the milestones we were able to accomplish, we were voted the CIT program of the year for the state. That was a, a big thing for us to be able to accomplish in a short amount of time. And Lieutenant Wayne Handley was our, elected the trainer of the year for CIT. We have sought commission, we sought accreditation through Kalia, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. We got a very favorable assessment report. The only one that can mess this up now is me when I go to St. Louis and have to testify before the board. So I'll be prepping for that until it's time for me to go. Any questions, Vice? I want through it pretty quick.
We are at a time. So, you know, Chief, are we going to get a copy of the slides?
Yes, absolutely.
Can we have it back? I'd like to have it rescheduled for the next meeting.
Sure, to ask you some questions.
Yeah, I've got listed things there.
All right. All right, Chief, thank you.